Okay, we are going to move on. So we're adjourned there and we're back in session. Quick turnaround time. This public meeting of the Board of Education for June 27th, 2023 is called to order. All items being considered this evening are posted on the PPS website under the Board of Meetings tab. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28. It will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. You can check the district website for replay times. Good evening. Welcome everyone to tonight's special meeting. We are starting an hour later than usual due to the board meeting being first an executive session and then in the special meeting, which many of you just witnessed. So thank you very much for your patience and for waiting. This is also the last meeting where we will have our board colleagues, Director Konstam and Director Lowry. In a change to our normal order where we'd recognize our departing colleagues up front, we are going to be wishing them farewell at the end of tonight's agenda. Before we get started, I want to share a few reminders. In order to ensure safety, please keep walkways and aisles clear. And we also ask you to be considerate of those around you and to please keep any signs below chin level. So we're moving on to our first item tonight, recommendation to dismiss an educator. The superintendent is recommending dismissal of educator Damon Keller on the grounds of insubordination, neglect of duty, and inadequate performance. By statute, the board must vote on the dismissal of contract educators. Before this meeting, Mr. Keller attended two pre-dismissal Lauderdale meetings with his union representative on March 14th, 2023 and May 17th, 2023. In addition, on June 6th, Mr. Keller and his union representative met with the superintendent. As part of that process, Mr. Keller was offered and declined a pre-termination hearing per board policy 5.20.132-P. In addition, in advance of today's vote, the board scheduled an executive session to consider Mr. Keller's dismissal. Mr. Keller requests that the board's meeting be held as a public meeting, and we did that on June 14th. At that meeting, we heard from staff about the investigations and findings related to the recommendation for dismissal. We also heard Mr. Keller's perspective on the findings and had an opportunity to ask some clarifying questions. So I'm going to put a motion on the table and then we'll have board discussion. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6727, dismissal of a contract educator?
Motion.
Second.
Director Green moves. Director Hollins seconds. And we will now, actually, we can have board discussion, but I would prefer to go on to public comment. I know we have some folks signed up for public comment. Is the board okay moving straight into the public comment? Great. Kara, I believe we have some public comment. Ms. Bradshaw, excuse me.
We do. We have Nash Suri.
Welcome. Thanks for being here. And we didn't include our normal, but we will, you'll have three minutes. And if you could just state your name and your time will start when you start.
Do I press this to start?
Say again.
Press this?
Yeah, actually, I don't think you need to press it. Just go ahead and, yep, start. Thank you for being here.
Hello, my name is Nash Suri. Suri spelled S-U-R-I. I am so frustrated about the issues concerning Oakley Green Middle School's beloved teacher, Mr. Damon. During my first year at Oakley, a lot of days I did not want to go to school. But one thing I always looked forward to was dance and Mr. Damon's fantastic teaching skills. Oakley Green dancers have had incredible opportunities, such as performing at the Moda Center before a Blazers game and dancing in the Junior Girls Parade. Since Mr. Damon's leave was put in place, it has been absolute chaos. At one point, we had fantastic dance substitutes, but that only lasted a week and a half. And after, we had subs that knew nothing about dance. Dance class turned into mayhem with kids from other classes coming in and causing trouble. I stopped looking forward to dance and I would just sit on my phone like everyone else. Please do not fire Mr. Damon. He is my favorite teacher and it would not be the same without him teaching dance. Thank you for your time.
Nemea Savali-Smith.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hi, thanks for having me. Okay, um, my name is Nemea Savali-Smith. Savali is pronounced S, or spelled S-A-V-A-L-L-I and then just dash Smith. Alright, um, today I'm here to talk about all the reasons why our amazing dance teacher, Mr. Damon, is a huge part of the Oakley Green community and the impacts firing Mr. Damon will have on Oakley Green. Okay, so first things first, Mr. Damon is a huge reason that people come to OG Middle School. They don't come because it's any old dance program. They come because of the opportunities that Mr. Damon gives all of his dancers. Not only does his connections allow us to perform at a Blazers game, they also allow him to be able to take his capstones, which is the highest level of dance there, to Las Vegas, to take lessons with the Jabberwockies, which is not something that most dance programs get to do. If you do not know who the Jabberwockies are, they are a group of super talented, amazing dancers that the capstones get to meet thanks to Mr. Damon. If you take Mr. Damon away from Oakley, think about all the opportunities that would then make all of the incoming students miss out on because most middle school dance teachers don't have the kinds of connections that ours does. The next thing I want to talk about is the impact Mr. Damon has on the students. Mr. Damon is one of the teachers that students feel safe around because of his kind personality and also doesn't put up with rude targeting comments that makes all students and makes all students feel welcome in his class. He also is a teacher that cares about not only how his students do academically, but also in the world as well. He thrives to help us become the best we can be outside of school as well as inside. Mr. Damon is a teacher that through his easygoing, kind, and friendly personality allows all of his students to trust him. It also makes him many of the students' favorite teacher. I know a lot of my friends who danced with me have told me that he is their favorite teacher and he's one of my favorite teachers as well. Mr. Damon is a teacher that tries to make relationships with the students as well as teach. He still has contact with his old students that have now graduated high school and some of the eighth graders that graduated Oakley Green this year have known him since kindergarten. This is not something that all teachers do and have. The relationship that Mr. Damon builds with his students is a big reason why students love his class and is one of the reasons we all love Mr. Damon. At the beginning of the year, a friend told me that she was a soccer player, could not do dance and wouldn't enjoy it. And she turned out to be an amazing dancer who looks forward to her dance class every day. And then the third topic I have is something I heard at the last meeting. The last meeting, it was said that Mr. Damon, that should Mr. Damon have a second job, it shouldn't interfere with his job at Oakley. Here's the thing, though, it didn't. Sure, he missed some days with that, but that wasn't because of his job. He usually told us the reasons why he was gone. It was because he was sick or it was a family stuff. He only ever missed it because of work when, the only time he ever missed it because of work was when he was put on leave. He also made sure that he was always there for every show or trip he had planned for his dance class. The only time he missed something that he had planned both this year and last year, which was the two years I've been at Oakley, was because you guys put him on leave. He didn't miss anything else. He also made sure that he was always there on the days he needed to teach us new choreography, except for when he was sick because no teacher would come in when they were sick. And one of the days that happened, he brought a senior at Jefferson High School to come teach us in his absence. In his absence. Now, I could go on and on about how Mr. Damon, how he's a fair, kind, and funny, and overall amazing teacher. But these are the things I think are most important. He cares about his students. He gives us amazing opportunities. He is always there when he needs to be and he makes everyone feel safe and comfortable in his class. I really don't see how you find another dance teacher that will even level up to half of what Mr. Damon means to his students. So, I will say it again. Mr. Damon is a critical, positive part of the Oakley Green community, especially to his students. And I think it is a huge mistake to not consider the many impacts firing Mr. Damon will have upon it. Mr. Damon has so many supporters, moms, dads, students, teachers, and parents who work for PPS. He has the support from the students because of the kind of teacher he is. He has support from the parents because of the stories and things they've heard from the mouths of their students. And he has the support of all the teachers because of just the kind of person he is. And, all of this, so this is the person that you are thinking of firing today. This is the person whom you might make leave Oakley Green and this is the person you are thinking of taking from our community. All I'm asking is for you to think of all the factors before deciding and realizing that no matter what issues you might take with Mr. Damon, you will not be able to replace all that Oakley Green will lose with his absence and that will be on each and every one of you. Thank you so much for your time.
Birch Query.
Hello. My name is Birch Query. I just graduated eighth grade at Oakley Green Middle School. I am here in support of Mr. Damon. Mr. Damon has been an important part of the Oakley Green community. He is special to a lot of people for many different reasons. He is special to me because he helped me realize my passion for dance. My sixth grade year was online and that made seventh grade even harder. I had to get used to all of the changes that came from being in middle school a year late. It was really difficult for me to find a place where I felt like I belonged. I started to feel like an outcast. Mr. Damon was incredibly welcoming and helped me realize how much I loved dance. His class was also where I made my first new friends. They introduced me to their friends. And through this and through those friendships, I made a lot more friends than I ever would have at Oakley on my own. Mr. Damon was also good at making his classes fun. He worked really hard on giving us opportunities we probably wouldn't have gotten if he wasn't our teacher. Even kids who came into his class that wanted nothing to do with it enjoyed his lessons. Sometimes he would let us use our own imaginations to create our own choreography for songs. While at Oakley, he was part of two major communities, the black community and the dance community. As a white person, I cannot speak for the black community, but as a dancer, I can speak for the dance community. The truth is that the white, sorry, that the dance community has been falling apart in his absence. We almost never do anything anymore. Kids are always on their phones, Chromebooks, or just playing volleyball. It's more like a second recess than an actual class. When Mr. Damon was there, we actually got stuff done. Good amounts of stuff, actually. But it wasn't just his dance students that looked up to him. Lots of students that had either taken dance before with him or even just seen him from time to time in the hallways loved him just as much as the dancers did. He might have been a bit strict sometimes, but it was in a good way. He pushed us to do better than we ever thought we could. He motivated us when we felt like giving up. I know that I have finished middle school, but I think a lot about the incoming sixth graders, the soon to be seventh and eighth graders, and even the future Oakley Green Middle School students. I've heard lots of people say that their siblings have, they have siblings that want to come to Oakley Green specifically because of Mr. Damon's dance program. If you take him away from Oakley, then you're taking this experience of having such an incredible teacher away from all of those kids. I have been incredibly lucky to have multiple teachers like that over the course of my education. I want all the students currently at Oakley and the ones who will be there in the near future to have that same experience me and my fellow ninth graders were lucky enough to have. I hope you will let Mr. Damon continue to teach at Oakley. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Amy Ongeri.
I'm a parent of two Oakley Green students and an uprising Oakley Green student.
If you could just state your name and your last name.
Amy Ongeri.
Thank you.
We heard a lot about Mr. Keller here. We heard how he left the classroom for a few minutes to talk to a student in the hallway, leaving his class briefly unattended. We heard how he asked kids to leave the bathroom in a manner that those particular students didn't like. We also heard how he occasionally pursued professional development as a dance professional during school hours without proper approval. Well, I want to share some things that we haven't heard here yet. We haven't heard how Mr. Keller welcomed my daughter into the dance program at Oakley Green and made her feel so special that the class quickly became her favorite and one of the main reasons she looked forward to going to school. We haven't heard how, although my daughter was made to feel special and unique by Mr. Keller, she really wasn't in the sense that he welcomed all his students in that way. We haven't heard how Mr. Keller helped many of these students reach their potential so well that the students performed and compete all over the city. We also haven't heard how Mr. Keller served as a rare African-American role model for all students in one of the most diverse schools in the entire state. We haven't heard about his love and care for all students and how that love and care was returned by so many of the dance students at Oakley Green, some of whom you've seen here, but many who you haven't. The issue is supposedly that Mr. Keller has been too absent from the classroom. But in his absence, the school has had a series of substitutes, most of whom are not dance teachers, and one of whom spent the entire class sharing her Tinder searches with my kid. The kid came home that day and asked me where the sugar daddy was, so that happened. Under the current administration at Oakley Green, there has been a consistent pattern of targeting non-white faculty and students for discipline that others do not receive. Most of the African-American teachers at Oakley are being driven out through firings or are requesting to transfer to avoid that possibility. Some of the white faculty are leaving as well. There are allegations of sexual misconduct, retaliation, and professional misconduct by Vice Principal Spencer Crum. And the allegations that Principal Ryerson used the N-word and the B-word against an African-American staff member. And I think it's worth noting that that's an allegation that most of the African-American community at Oakley Green believe, which also speaks to the atmosphere being created there. So I ask you, who is really going to benefit from the firing of Mr. Keller? Well, I don't know. You're the experts. But I'll tell you who's not going to benefit, and that is the kids and the entire Oakley Green community.
Thank you.
Shannon Shambo.
Hi.
Welcome.
My name is Shannon Shambo and I, S-H-A-M-B-A-U-G-H. I'm the parent of a student that just graduated from Oakley Green. And I also work as an equity specialist for Evergreen Public Schools. I believe that a school district's highest ethical obligation is to act in the best interest of students, especially students from educational justice, like many at Oakley Green. No one from the school board or the district office has taken the initiative to seek input from students, families, or the community over the last several months. However, the families and the students have come down to the district office to try to give their opinions. And also their opinions around the structural racism that's going on at Oakley Green, in addition to specifically what's happening with Mr. Damon. But if you were to ask, if you were to ask the students and the families who's caused harm at Oakley this year, it would not be Mr. Damon. Students would tell you that they would much rather have had Mr. Damon absent for an hour a week during a short timeframe than for him to have been absent for the entire spring, for them to miss their trip to Las Vegas and for him to not be at their promotion ceremony after three years of very challenging education. I wish you could have been at the Oakley Promotion Ceremony. Two girls of color spoke courageously about the three black teachers they've lost this year, Harris, Rizer, and Damon. They spoke of the inspiration those teachers gave them and the pain of having them leave, and it was heartbreaking, especially after everything this cohort has been through during the pandemic. Given the statistics and research that show having just one black teacher in a child's life reduces the likelihood that an African-American boy will later drop out of high school by 39%. I would expect the ethical priority of the board would be to keep black teachers in schools with black students. As part of my job, I train education leaders to use an equity lens when making decisions. Have you taken time to use the PPS equity lens when considering your decision to terminate Mr. Damon's employment? If not, no worries. I filled it out and I emailed it to you earlier. The following questions are vital to the decision you're making tonight. How have you intentionally involved external stakeholders affected by the decision to fire Mr. Damon? Is there stakeholder support or opposition to the proposal to fire Mr. Damon? How does the proposed action expand opportunities for racial equity and social justice? How are black and native student groups affected by the decision to fire Mr. Damon? How will blacks and native students experience a greater sense of belonging? Are there any potential unintended consequences of the decision? How does the proposed action disrupt barriers to equitable outcomes? What element of systemic racism is being disrupted by firing Mr. Damon? What information and data are you basing your decision upon? I'm going to keep going because you let the kids go. I've got a minute. What data will you?
We do give a little more lenience to children than we do adults.
Okay, then let me just finish my last sentence.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Finally, why was a principal with little to no cultural competency chosen to lead a minority-majority school? Because the factor that has caused the single most harm this year at Oakley Green is the principal. She would tell you that she is simply a by-the-book rule follower, but I would argue that the book was written by white supremacy. I believe that the highest ethical obligation of the school board is to interrupt white supremacy and act in the best interest of students of color. They shouldn't have to fight for simply an adequate education.
Olivia Lamberson.
Welcome.
Hi. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and Mr. Superintendent. My name is Olivia Lamberson. At the June 14th meeting, the board spoke of accountability and believability. I have a few thoughts on your statements as a community member and a parent of a student that just completed her eighth grade year at Oakley Green as an Oakley Green dancer. No other teacher has required the level of accountability from my student that Mr. Damon has. When the kids were preparing for their eighth grade field trip, he required daily reports from the teachers on the kids' behavior, participation, and attendance. All of their teachers had to sign off on all of those things for them to participate in the field trip. My child does not notice matters of leave because that's not something the kids are paying attention to when it comes to accountability. What she does notice is how her white teachers seem to get passes not afforded to Mr. Damon. When one of her teachers confiscated a student's bathroom passes, the kids asked her teacher what happens if the student is on her period. He responded by saying, "You gross, don't talk about that in my classroom." When a teacher had a guest speaker in my students' classroom, he allowed that person to use profanity to describe the students in front of the class without correcting this person or apologizing to the students. I hear Ms. Calvert reference dignity-denying comments and profanity as reasons for Mr. Damon's dismissal. But it makes me think of these intentionally targeted and cutting remarks from white teachers and the zero response I received to my emails to Ms. Ryerson. Where is the, where is the accountability? Why do Ms. Ryerson and Ms. Calvert get to pick and choose who the rules apply to? When rules are applied differently to black educators and white educators, that is racism. So to go back to the board's point on believability from June 14th, you're asking me and the rest of the Portland community to believe that this district is committed to anti-racism. It is this district and its choices I do not believe. I urge the board to vote to keep Mr. Damon and examine how administrators pick who come before you for dismissal, who gets a pass or a promotion, and who gets punishment. To continue disproportionate punishment like this would be unethical. Mr. Damon is committed to these kids. He's kind and dedicated to turning them into great people, not just great dancers. If any of the board had visited Oakley Green Dance in the past two and a half months, you would see and feel the loss of his presence at Oakley Green. Look beyond the handbook and see how PPS administrators have targeted educators of color like Ms. Harris and Mr. Damon. Because accountability does matter and the children are watching. Vote to retain Mr. Damon as an educator and prove that students and educators of color matter beyond a history month.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
That concludes public comment. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your comments tonight. So we had our hearing a couple of weeks ago where we were able to ask a lot of questions. I think at this point, I'll open it up for any board comments before we move to a vote.
Was there any additional information provided that came out of the hearing? I believe Director, for example, Director Hollings asked for some information. The answer could be no, that's fine. I'm just wondering if there was anything additional for the record that we need to be considering.
I don't believe there's been anything more added.
I want to say something. So I've quoted these statistics here before about who makes up our education community. Education secretaries, 92% white. Superintendents, 93% white. Principals are 80% white. Teachers, 82% white. University professors, 81% white. School board members, 80% white. And students in our country, 46% white. And so I heard some of the testimony today and it really made an impact on me because I think we do have a moral obligation to do what we think is right. I know for a fact, because I've worked for public agencies in this town for about 30 years, that disciplinary action is disproportionately meted out by race. And I know that the outcomes are disproportionate as well. For instance, scrutiny on black employees in our public institutions and private as well fall disproportionately on black people, specifically black men. Those outcomes, especially for public employees, impact your retirement and therefore end up in the loss of black wealth. I've seen it for 30 years with my own eyes. I've witnessed it and experienced it as well. I think firing is too harsh of a punishment considering that we say even having a black janitor in a building increases outcomes for students of color. We say that we need to hire more black teachers and I think we have an opportunity to retain. We have an obligation to not just hire black teachers, but to also retain them. And support them. I just want to make sure I've got the notes that I had, but that's it. I think that we have an obligation. I should say I have a personal obligation to do what I think is right, and so I'm going to be a no on this tonight.
We're all waiting? I have a statement if anyone else wants to go. All right, and then we'll move to a vote. I don't usually do things very long, but I do this time. So the dismissal of a public employee is a very serious matter and it's one I don't take lightly. I've been a public employee for more than 25 years. I've been an elected official for just four. While the jobs are very different, public employees and elected officials do have the same fundamental duty. It's to uphold the public trust in everything we do. Sometimes it is obvious how to do that and sometimes it is less clear. Tonight, for me, the answer is obvious. Mr. Keller is well-loved by his school community and the broader community. By all accounts, he's an inspiring teacher and I've heard personal testimonials from students and parents to that effect. Despite that, Mr. Keller's actions are what we must take into consideration tonight. The actions Mr. Keller is accused of are not, as some have suggested, simple mistakes or administrative errors. They are repeated intentional violations of district policy and the collective bargaining agreement that his union, the Portland Association of Teachers, negotiated on Mr. Keller's behalf. At our meeting two weeks ago, Mr. Keller presented what he called his narrative that explained his actions. It was compelling, but also misleading because it glossed over the clear facts of the case. And I want to repeat those facts here tonight for the record. First, it's important to note Mr. Keller's history of discipline because it does contribute to the recommendation tonight for termination. On March 16th, 2016, Mr. Keller received a written reprimand. On August 20th, 2019, Mr. Keller received two written reprimands. On April 28th, 2021, the State Teaching Standards and Practices Commission issued a public reprimand and a two-year probation of Mr. Keller's teaching license, primarily due to inappropriate physical and verbal actions towards students. On March 10th, 2022, Mr. Keller received a letter of expectations. And on May 17th, 2022, Mr. Keller received a final written reprimand and five-day suspension. That's all in advance of what we're talking about in terms of the most recent allegations. After all of that, Mr. Keller engaged in the following behavior. In October 2022, Mr. Keller requested to take Wednesday afternoons off for eight weeks, starting in January, to perform work for his outside business. That request was denied because, under PPS policy and the collective bargaining agreement, there is no such leave available to take. However, Mr. Keller then proceeded to take sick leave for five of those Wednesdays, time when he was at Odyssey getting paid for doing work unrelated to his position at Oakley Green, for which he was also getting paid. Mr. Keller's explanation that both he and his family members just happened to be sick on Wednesday afternoons in January and February lacks credibility. While under investigation in that matter, Mr. Keller requested March 22nd to 26th off to judge a dance competition in North Carolina. Again, he was informed that there was no such leave available and the request was denied. Again, he called in sick for those days. When this matter was investigated, Mr. Keller claimed he really was sick, but recovered miraculously in time for a red-eye flight on Friday night to judge over the weekend. However, Mr. Keller was unable to produce- for leave were denied. I can sympathize with him on that point, but I think it's important to also point out that Mr. Keller had other options. He could have contacted his union in October of 2022 and asked to see if it was possible to negotiate a letter of agreement that would allow him to teach at Odyssey. Instead, Mr. Keller intentionally misused sick leave and then lied about it. If Mr. Keller is terminated tonight, the Oakley Green community will suffer a tremendous loss. Oakley Green's students will be denied Mr. Keller's expertise, his passion, his inspiration. But they will not be denied those things because of the district investigation, or the superintendent's recommendation, or the board's action. They will be denied those things because of Mr. Keller's actions and his decision to put his own self-interest above the interests of his school and his students. Mr. Keller violated the public trust repeatedly, and when that happens, I cannot look the other way. This board often talks about creating a culture of accountability. For that to happen, we must hold everyone accountable for their actions and do so consistently throughout the organization. Unfortunately, this is not a close call. Mr. Keller has repeatedly, intentionally, and flagrantly violated the public trust. A failure to terminate Mr. Keller for his insubordination and dishonesty will make it impossible for us to hold either staff or management accountable in the future. That's why I will be voting yes on today's resolution. I want to end on a different note. As part of this process, many concerns about Oakley Green have been put forward by parents and students, and it is very clear to me that the community is reeling. And while I believe Mr. Keller is solely responsible for his actions and the resulting consequences, that doesn't lessen the negative impact on the school and the students. As an individual school board member, I don't have a lot of insight into what is happening on the ground at Oakley Green. But as we reset for the summer, I would like to ask the superintendent, obviously the board, it's up to the entire board, but I'd like to ask the superintendent to provide the board, by August 31st, prior to the start of the 2023-24 school year, an update on the supports that will be provided at Oakley Green next school year and the engagement that's planned to address issues unrelated to the ones that we are talking about today.
You just continue to discriminate.
The context matters.
Would anyone else like to make a statement?
Yes. So...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I just want to say something, you guys. You know, when we are demonstrating negative behaviors, our kids see that as well. And I, hold on, hold on, I understand that you're upset and frustrated. I get that. I understand that. But once again, our kids are watching how we behave. And I know, and I get that, I get that. I'm just asking people just to be respectful. That's it. That's it.
Respect for our kids.
Both ways.
Do you remember those two black women with Bernie Sanders in 2016? Respectability politics is what you're calling for.
Director Berman, go ahead.
I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah.
Okay. So I spent a long time thinking about it, and I appreciate the students coming tonight and speaking their truths and the importance of this teacher in your life and in your development and the positive experience you had. I'm also mindful of Director DePass's comments about discipline. And when I got on the board eight years ago, one of the things that I heard often was a plea from parents and students at schools like Tubman and Oakley Green that often students had substitutes over and over again, and the impact that that was having on their students and the impact on their learning and the outcomes that students were having. And if you looked around the district, the level of substitutes, or the long-term substitutes, or the not being able to find substitutes, or having the full staff at the beginning of the school year, was disproportionately in those schools that had the students who had been least well-served by this district. So I'm, when I think about what the trade-off was of leaving Oakley to go teach students in another school and the fact that students then weren't getting what I feel as a board member, we should be, every student deserves, which we should have a teacher in every classroom who's qualified and committed to those students. So I just, I want to just share that truth that I've heard. I've also heard from other, over my course at the time on the board, different student and family voices, and I have to hold both those truths to be true. So I don't think this is an easy decision, but I do want to acknowledge that there are more than just the voices in this room, because there were also voices demanding that the board and the district do something to make sure that every day students had a teacher in the classroom who wasn't a substitute.
Isn't Odyssey also part of the PPS system?
It also serves predominantly white affluent students, and it's a little bit different because, and I appreciate you raising this, because some people raise the issue of coaches. And generally, coaches are serving their students, and in this case, they're, it was actually working for a different employer, not working for PPS. So yes, well, the Oakley Green, so it could be, you know, I could see a different set of facts, maybe, that if it was after-school, a son program, or an after-school program at a different school where it wasn't conflicting, that would be different, but we have a need for a substitute. Again, I just want to hold these truths, that what we heard a lot from the very beginning, and demands that the board and the district and the superintendent ensure that students had, didn't have a lot of substitutes all the time.
I think my point was that both of the students are being served are all within our system, and it's really unfortunate that the two leaders of these schools couldn't have had a conversation. So everybody...
I guess the distinction I'm going to make is that it wasn't the Odyssey principal or who was running the program, so it was a separate, so it's, I think...
It was a separate contract. Yeah.
I love that you're trying to think of, like, how could we make this...
The details are important, but we're also talking about they're all PPS kids. So I just wanted to express, it's unfortunate that the principals at those two schools couldn't have had a conversation and made it work for all of the students.
Additional board comments?
Just one other question for the superintendent, or maybe it's somebody else's staff, so I'll let you choose who to answer it. Was there a consideration of something short of termination? Just...
Ms. Calvert?
I think you heard Assistant Superintendent Calvert present a compelling set of facts regarding this case, so I won't rehash this. Our chief of schools is here there, and why I'm supportive of her recommendation.
This is already getting more central office stuff, the black from Guerrero.
So I think, as we laid out, I appreciate the question, thank you for asking. The, as we laid out the other evening, there is a series that we've worked through, right? This has been a progressive discipline process, and that the previous, in the fall, that what had happened, there was a, excuse me, there was a final agreement or statement that was offered in the spring. There was a five-day suspension that was metered in the fall. And as we go through the process, we consider those as part of it, and then ultimately, the decision was to move to termination.
Director Hollins?
So yeah, this has been a very interesting conversation, because we talk about accountability. And, you know, the last couple of years I've been on the board is, and I've said this before, is it seems like it's a lack of accountability for the district systematically. And so, no, I don't need no applause, just let me talk. You know, and so, on one hand, is, well, we want to keep this teacher accountable and hopefully set a standard for accountability throughout the district. But then, you know, my worry is that when we talk about accountability, it's only for a select group of people. And, you know, as we are looking to move towards more accountability, I also think about grace. You know, always think about, you know, a second chance. And by no means, you know, I think, you know, Mr. Keller has some ownership of this as well. You know, I think that as a black man, I'm going to speak, as a black man, we have responsibilities when it comes to our kids, and we have to take that very seriously and know that the actions that we take is going to reflect on them, whether it's good, bad, or whatever. And so as I struggle with this decision, you know, I'll also look about, and this is for me, I look at some of the selective information that I received as a board member versus some of the information I received afterwards, and that's a concern for me. I would like to think that there would be an alternative discipline that we could do. And I'm, I don't know if this is the time we could actually do a motion to look at alternative discipline.
Actually, the decision before the board is dismissal or not, and that sits in the jurisdiction of the board. Lesser discipline, I think, goes back to the administration.
Can we make a motion to look at alternative discipline?
You're the board, so you can do that. The statutory authority to dismiss is exclusively with the board. The other discipline actions are not prescribed by statute.
Okay.
Are they prescribed by the contract? Sorry. I don't know.
There is a, there is a standard of progressive discipline built into the collective bargaining agreement. There isn't a matrix that leads to a single discipline outcome, if that's what you're suggesting.
I think that's a really important point, that this has been a cascade of issues that has led us to this point, and that, like, these most recent infractions and frankly, the dishonesty regarding North Carolina, it's unlikely that that would have just come to us for dismissal in and of itself. But it's a long list and a long history and a TSPC process, and that's why it's here before us. So I think, you know, I appreciate what you have to say, Director Hollins, about grace, and I hope that we are exercising that, you know, in other disciplinary processes with other employees. And I think we are, because quite frankly, we don't see very many of these. We don't have very many dismissals that come to us. We don't have very many employees that are subjected to sanctions from TSPC. It's extremely rare.
I'm going to say something to that, and this, so the very first time Mr. Keller was written up was in 2016. So we've been watching him for a long time. We've been watching him and waiting for him to fail, and I've seen it over and over again, not necessarily with this case, but in general. And we're, you can be a black employee, and you're either hyperinvisible or you're very visible. And you're very visible, and things are documented, and then we end up here. And I also think Mr. Keller needs to take responsibility for his part in this, and I'm going to reiterate that I think firing is, considering all that we say that we want to see in terms of outcomes is inappropriate.
Just a second. Director Hollins, I'm not sure if you were done or not. I just wanted to go back to you if you had more to say.
Yeah.
And then we'll go to Director Green.
So yeah, so, you know, when I, I guess, this is a very hard decision to make. You know, and I hear people, like I said, talk about accountability, that if this is where we're, if this is the direction we're going, and I get it, and my vote will be no not to, not to fire him and look at alternative disciplines. But if this is the level of accountability that we're going to go down, be sure that this is going to, my goal for this to be accountability all the way from the board level all the way down as far as accountability moving forward, we use strict, how are we doing here? And I think that's something we do need in this district. But, you know, when we talk about Mr. Keller and having a black man in the school building, I think that's 100% needed. And also, we have to make sure that we're doing what we need to do for our students and understand that we are being looked at, that we are, you know, there's the old saying that we have to work twice as hard. We know that this is not new for us, and knowing that happens, we have to make sure that we are above reproach, because this is what happens, whether we like it or not, good or bad, right or wrong. So I just wanted to just put that out there, and that's all I have to say.
That's called structural reasons.
Director Green?
So I'm an easy no. My question is for Ms., our legal counsel. So is it possible for us to amend this dismissal, this dismissal, prior to a vote for a lesser, something lesser than dismissal? Or do we have to do a no first and then ask for something less? What would be the procedural, the procedural piece to get dismissal off the table and then come back to something else?
I think the important part is that your decision is clear, so whether that's an amendment or a no vote, that will be clear what the decision is. It is not a path that I have seen, that the board is going to vote on something, other discipline here. I'm wondering if you need other inputs or information about what that level of discipline is coming through.
No, I'm not done. I am not done.
Okay.
So this is between me and you right now. We're talking. So what I heard you say was that there's not really a precedent, but that the board would need to be really clear on whatever it is that we should decide to do, that we either, we need to be clear that we want to do an amendment, so that we, basically what I just heard you say is, if we're clear that we want to do an amendment for something lesser than dismissal, then we can do that.
Yes.
Okay.
So I want to, hold on just a second. Hold on just a second. I want to make sure Director Green has the floor. Are you done?
Okay. But do I have to do that, how do I, do I need to make that motion? Because I'm just a lowly board member. Do I need to make that motion prior to the vote? Because if we vote, it's done. So do I need to say, I want to get a motion on the floor for something lesser than dismissal prior to the vote of Mr. Damon Keller? Do I need to say that? And if I do need to say that, did I just say that?
I think you made your intention very clear. My recommendation, and the most straightforward path of what you've described, is to make a motion to amend the motion that's on the table, as you would see fit.
So can I do that, or do I have to send it to the chair to do that?
No, you can do that.
So then I would like to make a motion that we amend the current dismissal for something lesser than dismissal.
I'm sorry, Director Green, I couldn't hear you. Can you say that again, please?
I would like to make a motion that we amend the current, whatever this is, for something, this current firing, for something lesser than dismissal.
Second.
Question, question...
So, go ahead.
Question to the proposer, that I think what I heard from counsel was that board's role is either dismissal or no dismissal, and anything less than dismissal is the superintendent's decision. So I wonder if I could make a friendly amendment to yours, that it be, that the superintendent, that be the superintendent, we're not deciding what the, this resolution wouldn't be the board directing what the lesser decision, discipline is, but it's the superintendent, which is the superintendent's role. the board's, um, role is either dismissal or no dismissal. And anything less than dismissal is the superintendent's decision. So I wonder if I could make a friendly amendment to yours that, um, it be dis, that the super, that that be the super. We're not deciding what the, the, this resolution wouldn't be the board directing what the lesser decision, uh, discipline is, but it's the superintendent, which is the superintendent's role. Do I have the, is that keeping the board in the correct lane?
I, I, I think that is keeping the board in the direct, in its correct lane. I was, there were questions earlier about what's statutory and what's not. But the, the motion as stated or with the friendly amendment would send it back to the superintendent to decide on what the discipline is short of dismissal.
So I just, hold on. Okay, so I just want to, just hold on just a second. We'll have a conversation about this. So there is a motion and a second, and I heard you accept, um, Director Brimmedworth's friendly amendment. So I just, I'm gonna restate it. You tell me if I get it right, um, that, that, that the amendment is to, is, is, is to, to not move forward with termination, but send it back to the superintendent for a lesser level of discipline.
May I?
Hold on just a second, Director DePass. I just want to make sure.
I believe that's what, what I'm looking to do.
Okay, I just want to make sure. And there's a second. So now that's on the table. So now we're going to discuss that. We're going to vote on that amendment and then depending on what happens with that amendment, we'll vote on the ultimate, um, the ultimate resolution. So, um, discussion on Director Green's amendment.
I have a question, um, Chief Franco, probably to you or Deputy Superintendent Calvert. Um, we, we've seen in this file here, a letter of expectation, probation. I guess the probation was from TSPC, so that's out of our purview. Um, but we've seen progressive discipline along the way. So what, what is the step prior to recommendation for dismissal typically? As I said, we don't see very many recommendations for dismissal.
There is a written, a gr, final statement, right, that says that, uh, conduct continuing in this manner could lead to, um, additional, uh, uh, ramifications, including an up to dismissal. And that's a right, and, and from us, it comes as a recommendation, right? So that process includes a series of letters and meetings with, uh, employees that will say, here are the expectations, here's what we're working towards. So we've had two louder mill letters with that. We've had, um, as I said earlier, there was, um, there was a final statement, final letter that was, um, around expect, uh, uh, of the expectations, moving forward if they were not followed, that would lead to additional discipline up to a recommendation for termination. So those came through in a variety of ways, right? So there's, there's formal letters, there's meetings, there was, there was a suspension, there were additional letters. There, including two louder mill letters, a meeting with the superintendent, the meeting with the folks here. So those are, that's the, as we go through the process, there are all these spaces and places for there to be adjustments in, in, um, the, the, uh, there's notice about what the next step is going to be and what the recommendation is going to be, then also, uh, expectation about changes of behavior.
And Mr. Damon, sorry, he's been on administrative leave, is that correct? How does that, is that just after the, um, termination?
It, it is part of the, it was part of the process. That's correct, during the investigation.
And Director Calvert, um, uh, Mr. Keller was, um, issued a five-day suspension in May of 2022. Generally in progressive discipline, a one-week suspension is usually the last thing before termination. And this may be an HR question that you're not able to answer, but, um, if, is there, do, do we do longer than one-week suspensions? I mean, and I think, what, here, let me put the, point of the question. Um, would we be creating something here where we created another step in the progressive discipline process that would apply to all other, um, employees of the district?
I think that that's probably a question that we'd have to go back to HR for, yeah.
I just, I want to just say, I know this is really uncomfortable for us because we've just never done it before. And I just wanted to add, um, I would want, wonder what it looks like to be, have a restorative process, like what would we do? You know, to make, to make the district, I mean, li, literally the kids, the building has got issues. To make it so we all win, you know, everybody. And I mean, nobody's here feeling like a winner right now. So what does it look like with that amendment to, um, to outline a restorative process? And it does feel weird. It feels like putting on a new pair of shoes. It doesn't feel comfortable because we don't usually do this.
I had a question. I'm sorry, this is getting, um, I think it's the intersection between, um, the contract and the, um, the evaluation process. So the, all the things you just described, is that's separate from, um, your evaluation of your performance in your classroom where the, cause I'm trying to think of other examples that I've had in the past where we've had this, where somebody had a, um, a plan, a plan for improvement. They didn't make improvement. They had two years. It's a whole host of things. So that's a separate process. And so that's, that's not what, um, Mr. Keller's, um, that he wasn't in that process. He's in this other alternative discipline process. Do I, I'm just looking for, does that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So there, 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 when we do typically evaluations are performance reviews, right? And then, and discipline is separate from that.
So additional conver, conversation, I, I'll, I'll say, I'm, I'm going to vote against the amendment. I, I made my position clear. I, I think this is, this is not a closed case. I do want to respond, Director DePass, to something you said earlier about, um, Mr. Keller being sort of in the crosshairs from 2016. I, I, I mean, that is a perspective on it. The other perspective is that he actually doesn't care about following the rules and procedures. And, and I'll be honest, I was troubled by his testimony when he was here, um, that he refused to take any responsibility. He continued to lie to us directly as we asked him questions about, about these events. And the fact that he was under investigation for sick leave abuse and engaged in sick leave abuse says to me that he, his, that behavior is not going to change. I think we can also hold and end both here because your points about the importance of, you know, diversity in schools and diverse teachers and making sure we're supportive, I, I agree with those a hundred percent. And I also think it will be a complete failure of this board if we don't take action in this particular case with this particular teacher. Additional comments from the board and then we'll move to a vote on this amendment?
I, I do think, um, Director Green, I see where you're coming from and wanting to try to show a little bit more grace here. Um, but what's really hard for me to wrap my head around is that we have a system of progressive discipline that is very well described in our contract with our teachers' union. And I've sat in bargaining where we made minor adjustments and where we went back and forth to try to improve it or to try to give our teachers more rights. And I mean, it's, this is a very, um, dynamic part of our contract that receives a lot of attention. And so we've had these steps that are laid out, um, and this is what has been followed in this case. And over this long course of progressive discipline, there hasn't been any evidence of, um, moving in the right direction, like wow, you know, I, I've, there, this discipline has been laid out. And if I make one more misstep, I could potentially lose this job that I love that serves kids beautifully. You know, there's no, we've, there's not one e, bit of evidence in this that shows that, that changed course. And so what I, what, what is hard for me to think about with the amendment, which I'm trying to be open-minded to, is what are we asking the superintendent to do or what would we be asking our administrators to do? Because to me, I think it sounds like we want to change that whole clause in our contract with our union. Um, we're no longer going to stand by the, the processes of progressive discipline that we have both agreed to over many, many years. Um, so either that or we're saying we're going to treat one person differently. So it's hard, it's hard to, um, it's hard for me to think ahead to what that, what we're asking the superintendent to do there.
Um, I have a request from a board member just to take a very short recess to, um, um, ask for some advice, um, from legal counsel. So if there are no objections, I'm going to recess us. People can take a quick restroom break. Um, we'll be back in five minutes at eight fifteen. Oh, board members can't talk to one another, to be clear.
And, um, and I also believe, um, that, um, this is a case where there is discipline needed. Um, based on the discussions we had earlier, the superintendent's the appropriate person to decide what that is. Um, but I definitely believe, um, students deserve to have their teachers in the classrooms. But I am going to, um, support the, Mr. Director Green's motion.
Any additional conversation before we move to a vote? Okay, um, so the motion on the table, um, is to amend the resolution directing the superintendent to determine a discipline less than dismissal. Does anyone need me to read that again? We good? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, of Director Green's amendment, please vote yes.
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 All those opposed?
No.
I think I got that, but, uh, just, let's do a roll call just to make sure.
Herman Green, yes.
No.
No.
Gary Hollins. Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay, so the amendment passes by a vote of four to three. And unless there's further board discussion, I'm going to move to a vote on the underlying resolution, which is now essentially, um, that, that directing the superintendent to determine a discipline less than dismissal. So again, we voted on the, on the, on the motion to change the, the, the resolution. So now we're going to vote on the underlying resolution. Any further comments before we vote?
I'm sorry, we're voting on the under.
It's the resolution amended.
Yeah. I want to come back. You had said something, um, Director Scott, about your expectation or like the board setting some sort of expectation for, for next fall week. Can you repeat what that was?
Yeah.
And are you asking the board to like affirm your suggestion?
Um, yeah.
I don't know what it is.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and read it again. And I, as an individual board member, I can't direct the superintendent to do it. I put it out there as an idea. Um, and so, um, what I asked is that, um, by, uh, by August thirty-first or prior to the start of the 2023-24 school year, that the superintendent would provide the board with an update on the supports that will be provided to Oakley Green next school year and the engagement that is planned to address issues unrelated to the ones we were talking about today.
Do you want to add that as a amendment to the underlying motion or do you want to just leave it as a suggestion?
Yeah, I mean, if the board wants to. I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no on the, on the underlying resolution. But if, if the board is going to support it and wants to add that language, um.
I'm agreeing to make sure that you report back to the board.
So it sounds like we don't need it necessarily.
Regardless.
Great. Any further discussion? Okay, so vote on the underlying resolution as amended by Director Green. Um, all those in favor, and again, so this underlying resolution directs the superintendent to find a discipline less than dismissal. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All those opposed?
No.
And with that, the resolution passes by a vote of five to two. Great. Director Green. Director Lowry. Oh, Director Green.
Y'all put me on program. Only black people get that. Okay. Um, I want to say, uh, thank you, but earlier today, um, I have to hold myself accountable. I don't know about everybody else but me. I'm just holding me accountable. And my tone when I was talking to Liz, I cut off, um, Ailey. And it may not have been a big deal to some, but to me, when I went away, I sort of checked my tone and I was like, oh, that was kind of, that was kind of rough. Um, regardless of how I felt and, you know, the passion, I, I still, the tone was harsh. And so for that, I'm apologizing for that and, um, just want to say, because I did it publicly, then I have to come back and eat it publicly, so.
We're cool. And Julia made my point then later on anyway, so we're good.
Great. Okay, we're going to move on of the rest of our.
I appreciate that modeling, Director Green. Back to, uh, Director Hollins' point about how important it is for us to treat one another with compassion and respect and hold ourselves to the same standards.
And so you're not just a pastor, you're also a saint now?
That's a promotion. That's a promotion. All right, we're going to move on to the rest of our agenda. So we are now going to vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you'd like to pull for discussion, we can set those aside for the next time we meet, which will be a different board in July. Um, uh, Ms. Brett, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
I'm going to give it Director Hollins and Director DePass with a second. Uh, any board discussion on the consent agenda?
Um, I just want to say there's an item on there where with our, uh, two PPS appointees to the Center for Black Excellence. And I want to say we had a really wonderful response from the community, a bunch of people interested in serving, a bunch of really passionate and well-qualified people. So it was a, uh, joy to read through those and participate in a process of, uh, selecting the two designees. They're both going to be amazing. Um, and, uh, so it's Keisha Locklear, it's in the consent agenda, and, um, Tracy Brown. And it's kind of a coincidence, but they both actually work for PPS in some capacity right now. Um, Ms. Brown as a, uh, MTSS, uh, specialist, she was a TOSA. And, uh, Keisha Locklear is the architect that I have had the privilege of working with on the Jefferson project. So thank you for your interest. Thanks for being here tonight. And, um, it just feels good to see that moving forward.
Yeah, they look like exceptional candidates. Thank you. Thank you for that process. Any other comments? Okay, the, oh, I'm sorry.
Just want to note that they are here in the audience, uh, just for.
Brown is here as well.
Ms. Brown and.
Oh, great.
Can we clap them in?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I didn't know you were back there.
Speech, speech, no.
Thank you for being here and thank you for, for serving in this capacity. So we're really going to benefit from it. Uh, the board will now vote on Resolution six seven two-two through six seven two-six and six seven two-eight through six seven two-nine. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. All right, our last agenda item tonight, um, is somewhat bittersweet, although Director Lowry stopped listening already. This is to thank Directors Konstam and Director Lowry for their time served on the board. Do I need to come break you guys up? What's going on down there?
Pastors are hanging out, talking about grace over here, so we're good.
Before we hear some reflections from, uh, Director Konstam and Director Lowry and from board colleagues, uh, I would like to actually first hear from Superintendent Guerrero if you have any comments.
I do. Uh, I've had a chance to do this a couple of times previously, but it, it's a feeble attempt to try to capture some highlights of the tenure of my two colleagues here at the DAAS. Um, uh, I don't, I, I'll go one at a time. Uh, let, let me start with Director Amy Konstam. Um, a few things you, you, you likely will recall and know during her time here, uh, on the board. Uh, having served as Chair of the School Improvement Bond Committee, uh, helped to lead work on the two thousand, two thousand seventeen Health Safety Modernization Bond. It helped address our systems, longstanding, uh, issues with water quality, asbestos, radon, fire safety, ADA concerns, uh, in our aging inventory of neighborhood schools. Uh, a product of this work included the, included the building of a brand-new Kellogg Middle School, the modernizing of McDaniel High School, uh, a fantastic new Lincoln High School, as well as a soon-to-open multiple pathways to graduation building, uh, in the fall of 2024. Uh, Director Konstam's been, uh, a continued big supporter of our charter and alternative programs, a huge supporter of our athletics. Uh, she has served as a partner with me as the board's liaison to the Council of Great City Schools. So she's continued to, uh, advocate for public education, uh, at the national level and help to highlight, uh, Portland Public Schools work, uh, on the council. Um, I, I could go on. Uh, uh, Director Konstam has always, uh, made it a point to, uh, nudge us towards, you know, what does it look like to demonstrate best practice in our school board governance? Um, Director Konstam has continued to be a consistent, uh, positive ambassador for our work here in Portland Public Schools. And I'm sitting next to you.
So, um, thanks, Superintendent. Before Director Konstam gets to go, we're going to do this one at a time. Um, I do want to ask if any of, uh.
Chair Scott.
Board colleagues have anything to say.
I just want to chime in because I think there's one really important thing that, um, Superintendent Guerrero left out of Director Konstam's, um, resume, which was her participation in the hiring of Superintendent Guerrero.
I didn't know if that was a plus, so.
Just wanted to note that important thing that you didn't note.
This place was hanging by a thread before that.
Amy, I got to know you when we ran together, and you had been on the board already for four years, and I just looked to you as a model in some of those conversations with the public, some of the interviews of how to approach this work. And it's always been clear that you really care about students. And I think there's a lot of people that don't know all the things you've done, like delivering meals to students, the ways that you show up in schools and do this quiet, hands-on, direct-service work. You have a huge heart for our kids, and you you live that every day. You and I got to work together on some policy writing early on in my time on the board when we were at Harvard. We were working on like language about volunteers and background checks and appropriate behaviors and relationships with students. And it's just always been fun to sit and talk through things with you. You also have a beautiful singing voice. And one of my favorite favorite memories of you will always be singing in your bathroom during the Council of Great City Schools meeting, and they all could hear us, which we didn't really think about at the time. But her bathroom has amazing acoustics, so I just love the joy you bring, the quirkiness, and this deep love for students. And I know that whatever you do next, it's going to be in service of this community and especially of its kids. So it's been an absolute delight to work with you, and I look forward to breakfast tomorrow and many other get togethers in the future.
Yeah, one of the things I'm going to say about you, Director Lowry, is how I hate going after you because you say. So I'll get to that in a minute, but no, I similarly, we ran together, and and I have learned a ton from you, and I've really enjoyed getting to know you. You do model on this board. You know, you 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 bring your best self, you bring your best thoughts, you are out there in the community and quietly out there in the community. You don't make a big deal out of it. And then you're sort of talking, you're like, oh, yeah, well, I visited that school, I did that, and I did that program, and I delivered those meals, and I did those things. And it's just really, really impressive. And, you know, I I just want to say, I mean, I we've we've had a lot of conversations, some of them really friendly, some of them heated, but I have tremendous respect for you, and I hope that we stay in touch, and I hope that you continue to remind me of the areas where, you know, I may need to improve or be better or do things a little bit differently. And you know my email, you know my phone number, so.
We have a list.
Yes, I I want to follow on, and I'm also glad not to go after Director Lowry. It's a tough act to follow. Amy, it's been a delight working with you and also just learning from how you've modeled engagement from, you know, attending basketball, women's basketball at Jefferson to.
Lady demos.
Lady demos to stuffing math envelopes, I think, to the hikes and the trails that you like to take to kind of reinvigorate yourself. So, yeah, I've really, I'm going to miss you, but I know how to get in touch with you, and I do appreciate your candor at times, too, that you've been very honest with me in giving feedback that's been loving and and honest and candid.
I'm gonna go before Director Green goes. So, Amy, like, I didn't run with her, but we walked. And so, you know, the one thing that I really value about Amy is that, you know, you're straightforward. You know, I didn't ever have to worry about you sugarcoating stuff, I didn't have to worry about you playing politics. You gave it to me just like I tried to give it, right? And that's, I respect that 100% because that showed me as a board member, I can give my unique self, I can be my authentic self. And you showed me that, you know, and, you know, that was one of our first walks, and we had some conversation, and I'm like, shoot, she for real, like, she she ain't holding back nothing, you know, and that was that was great for me, as, you know, I was a newbie on the on the board, so I thank you for that, and I thank you for all the advice and things you gave me. Thank you.
I'll still go do laps with you, Gary.
I'm ready, I'm ready. You want to pencil that in next?
I I think what I remember most is two two things, specific incidents. When I first got ready to run, I was deciding, this is what I'm going to do. We we had a meeting at a little bakery right over in north northeast Portland, get this little, but it's right by the laundry mat. And she she was really straightforward, like, why are you doing this? Why, why are you doing this? What do you want to get out of this? And what do you hope to do while you're there? I mean, just like really straightforward, and I'm like, uh, first of all, I want to run, it's like, I can do if I want. But she would not, she wouldn't let up on it. She was like, you have to understand why you're doing this, you have to understand what it is you hope to accomplish while you're there, and that's what you're going to have to stick to. You're not going to be able to allow, like, other people to try to derail you. Stay focused on why you're here, because it's not about politics. And the the other thing is when we were working with the alternatives and the charter schools, and I was trying to get some stuff through, and I didn't understand all the pieces, and I was the chair, first time I've been a chair, don't really understand, you know what I'm saying, all this other stuff, and she just pulls you on in, look, we've been working on this for a long time, don't let nobody tell you different, this is what we've done, I've helped with this. She was just like really low-key in the background coaching and allowing me to to, you know, still do what it is that I'm trying to get done, but just providing that that information. That has, I've always remembered that, I've always appreciated that. I I love, I've loved the fact that you're always in the background trying to help. I love the concern that you have for our 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 children who are being murdered in the streets, the moms who are losing their kids. There hasn't been a time where you haven't come up and you're talking to me about it. What should we be doing as a district? What should we be doing as a school? How can we help to change the narrative? And you've been, you've been focused on that, and I know that everything that you've done, even when we don't always agree, has been because you care about the kids and you want to make sure that we're doing right by them, and you want to see them be their best selves. And so I appreciate you so much for that. And as you go on to these next, these next ventures, whatever that might be, I want you to remember why you started doing what you do and why you have the love and the passion for for people the way that you do, and don't let anything stop you from being that person.
Well, I'll go after Herman. I know, it's.
Watch out, watch out.
So, no. Because I think I've known you the longest, Amy, since we were with our moms, both on the Planned Parenthood Board, then our kids in elementary school together, then playing baseball together, how many times we sat on that field, the sloping hill. It's still sloping and still bad, we're going to fix it. And then, as advocates, when the district was shortchanging high school students from instructional hours, being sort of the activist parents the outside, and then you moving to the inside, and then I came on the inside as well, and you, as a product of Portland Public Schools, I know you've always been very proud of that and that your kids went through our schools here and your contribution. So I think you should look back on your long legacy, not just the eight years on the board of what you've contributed and how the changes you brought about. I think if you said, we're on a path to modernizing all our high, all our high schools and all of our schools, and kind of it seems like an automatic, you were there at the very beginning. And those are all really important contributions. And frankly, I'm just a little bit jealous that you now have, can figure out like a new way to contribute, because I know you're not going to sit on the sidelines, that your heart's still with this district and with the students, most importantly, with the students. But you just won't have to come to meetings here every. So enjoy the, your your next chapter and figuring out the way that you're going to contribute to this community, because I know you're not giving up on this town or or PPS.
First of all, I have enjoyed every minute of working with each and every one of you, and I appreciate all the different life experiences and school experiences that we all bring to this work. And everybody's, everybody's here for a different reason, but I have grown to love each and every one of you, and I appreciate it and respect you. And I don't have any prepared remarks. I mean, for me, this experience has been about an opportunity for servant leadership for me, which is what fulfills me. And Ailey, I appreciate that you that you mentioned just the experiences I had being in schools and being at athletic events, too. I mean, that was a huge part of my board experience for me, because, not only because it it brought me joy, but because that's where I learned, that's where I learned about the heart of the work. And there's so much that I wouldn't understand at all if I hadn't walked through schools on an almost weekly basis with Dr. O, you know, and she's, you know, you walk into a classroom with her and you, she says what she's looking for. Where are the learning targets? What are the expectations? Here's the curriculum adoption, you know, and all of these conversations that we have at a policy level, wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to contribute and to, I think, have an impact on those conversations if I didn't understand what was really going on in our classrooms. And some of that is just through observation, but also through being with not just Dr. O, but all of our other staff. And so I appreciate the time that people have taken with me. And you guys hit on all the things that, the different areas that were really important to me. You know, strangely enough, I kind of came into this through our bond work after a failed bond in 2011, and people said, oh, this community won't support modernizing our public schools. And I said, no, that's not true, that was just a bad bond. They put it together, it was the wrong combination of things, you know, we're going to get it right, we're going to go back out, and we're going to, we're going to get it done. And we did, and I led the fundraising and everything for that campaign in 2012, and that's what put us on the path for Grant and Roosevelt and Fabian and Franklin, and then ended up on the board, and then, you know, led the campaign for our next bond in 2017. And so, and then again in 2020, you know, and and we're going to finish this, we're going to get I to B Wells in Cleveland done, and I will help you guys with that effort. It's really important. And then we start working on all of our other buildings. I think we've shown that our community cares a lot. And to me, not only is it hugely important to improve those spaces for our kids, but it's a, it's a visible symbol in our community that we care about children. And Gary and I talk about this sometimes, you know, I get so frustrated that we don't have athletic infrastructure in our city, because you go to places where you see these beautifully tended fields, and you see these turf baseball fields, and you think like, this community cares about kids. And so we we need to work on that stuff, but I love that about our bond work, and I will, as I said, continue to help making sure that we get through the rest of all of our decrepit buildings. So I just want to say to the superintendent, when I came on the board in 2015 and in the next, over the next couple of years, we had a series of crises, one after another. Roseanne's nodding with our shared PTSD. And this district was quite literally hanging by a thread. We had 53 vacancies in the central office. We couldn't attract people because we had a volatile and difficult board. That was a big, big challenge with the first part of our superintendent search. We had people, frankly, in the wrong positions or, you know, not the right people in the positions. And this is something that is a very, sometimes overlooked aspect of being a superintendent, because it's not the the visible day-to-day work of making sure there's a new curriculum adoption or, you know, all that kind of stuff. It is, it's the hiring. And, you know, Superintendent Guerrero was out every single day, all over the country, hustling, hustling, hustling. Here's our vision, here's what we're going to do in Portland, come join us, and attracting top-notch talent from all over the place. And now, you know, it is an immense privilege to work with the likes of Dr. Proctor and Dr. Adams and Jay Buno and all of our other leaders and Jonathan Garcia and Margaret Calvert, who aren't here right now. I mean, they're here. I see them, but there's others who aren't here. But this is how we're going to get the work done, and I, you know, we all are frustrated sometimes by the pace of impact for our children, because we want it so fast, we want to see the difference, we want to eliminate that achievement gap tomorrow, yesterday. You know, it's all, it's it's injustice right in our face. But you got to put the building blocks in place, and I do feel really confident that we have the right people in place to to get those building blocks in place, and we're already doing it. So I think we're on a positive path. It's always tenuous, there are always pitfalls ahead of us, but I want to thank you for your leadership and your friendship. And now I have to stop or I'm going to start to cry.
Thanks, Director Konstam. Superintendent Guerrero, bet you have something to say about Director Lowry, too.
Yeah, I have a lot to say about Director Lowry.
I got a list of stuff, so you start first.
It won't be exhaustive what I have to share. I always appreciate getting an opportunity to meet with board candidates as as they're embarking on their campaigns. It's just an introductory, you know, spend an hour together, what do you want to know about the district, what are your interests? And I remember Director Lowry sitting on the couch in my office, talking about, as a parent, as an advocate, around, I noticed the inequities in our school system, and I want all of our kids to have access to things like the arts and to be assured that they're going to be able to read as a result of their time in our schools. And, you know, I was glad to hear that because I agree. Those are things we definitely should be continuing to to challenge ourselves to to make sure. I I think we would probably all agree that Director Lowry has brought a certain lens of compassion to our work, and I think we saw that when we demonstrated, when we most needed it, when she served as board chair during the pandemic, which I don't think, you know, that was a tall order for school districts all around the country. And I think we got through it, and part of it is, I think, the tone you set when our broader community, you know, was rightfully anxious about, you know, is it safe? How are our schools going to be ready? You also had quite a hand in a few notable of our policies that I think will persist and are important, you know, respecting the rights of our students in searches of their property, the role of parents in that, consent, role of law enforcement, to more recently, you know, administering medication to students in reference to Narcan, we needed, given the challenges that we're having in our community with that, with opioids. And then back to where we started in our conversations with the arts, continuing to be a big promoter and supporter, and here we are, you know, during your tenure, a master arts education plan that has already started to close pathways for our most underserved students so that they have that opportunity to be in a play, to be in the band. And I know your service didn't start just here at the dais, you also continued to serve as liaison, but we're on the CBRC, so I know you had insight there into the resource allocation thinking of the school district. So we'll miss you as well. I'll miss you as well. Thank you for your empathy and your listening on many a phone call of the superintendent to try to help me think out loud through the paths, the steps we need to take next. Thank you.
And what are the five elements of reading? This goes back to that first conversation we had, so. It's like comprehension, phonemic awareness.
All right, you don't get to talk yet.
The staff all know this.
To my favorite foul-mouthed preacher. I I love that combination. It's, Ailey, what I want to say about you mostly, other than your friendship, is your incredible integrity. I really have appreciated you, you never showed up with ego in this role. You never were grandstanding, you never took a position because it would curry favor with a particular audience. You just always did the right thing. You just always acted ethically and guided by facts, and most of all guided by a real love and compassion for all of our students, and that is not easy to do in this theater. And you were, you showed such personal integrity. It's very inspiring to me. And you're a lot of fun. You are warm and caring, and you keep us laughing, and you're. You are warm and caring and you keep us laughing and you're in it for all the right reasons. So I have appreciated so much getting to know you and I appreciate your intellect. I appreciate your incredibly good work on the policy committee, your diligence and intelligence with that work. And I'll miss you.
I contrasted with Amy's behind-the-scenes work. Your work has been loud and extroverted and right on time. And I really appreciate having worked with you and knowing you. You do bring an incredible sense of integrity. And on things that are hard, you've demonstrated really that you're really thoughtful about your, how you're going to respond. You bring like a moral compass to the work. I love that you reminded us a couple of times how school climate statistics have impacted who feels less safe in our schools. You've reminded us of that a couple of times and you are a hell of fun. Also love the bad mouth. I think, I think that I see it as a, as an exclamation point at the end of a sentence. So thank you.
Director Lowry, oh my gosh. Yes, yes. So this is really heartfelt for me because you're one of two people who can call me on my stuff, but it doesn't really feel like it until after I start thinking about it. Like, hello, did she just say that? My wife. And she actually pointed it out to me as well, like, you know, she just told you, your stuff don't stink, right? Like, I was like, oh, go back and watch the video. Oh, she did. But that was, you know, getting that kind of compassion from someone, especially being a new board member here, was just tremendously helpful, thoughtful, caring. And for me, it was, it was just a level of, you know, humanity that just pours out of you. Like, it was just so awesome. And that was, and like I said, I didn't even realize it until I got it pointed out. But, you know, I want to thank you for your friendship. I want to thank you for, you know, your thought processes that we have sometimes. And I want to say that she is going to be my board mentor. And so nobody else can get it. That's how much highly I have respected you for what you have done, what you exude. And so I'm still looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
So I'm expecting you to schedule a breakfast with me very soon.
So we can do July 14.
Oh, I don't even have any prepared remarks. I'll, I'll come up with some. But, you know, I, I don't mean to offend anyone else on this board. And if I've said this to anybody else, I apologize, I take it back. But you are my favorite board member. And I was like, and you really, you really have been since the beginning. And I would not have guessed that we would hit it off the way we did. I mean, we ran together. You ran this very grassroots campaign. You know, you had an opponent, right? And, and I just, but I remember watching you and then when we got on the board and I don't know, like, we just, we clicked. And, and I, I mean, not only have I enjoyed serving on the board with you, I've really enjoyed just becoming a friend and, and something that's going to last for, I hope, a long time. And, you know, other people have said it, your ability to just ask the most insightful questions. Sometimes it's here at the dais when you like, sometimes you do it publicly, sometimes you write me a little note, sometimes we get a beer afterwards. And sometimes it's about school board stuff, sometimes it's about my life. And you're just sort of like, you just, you just, you, 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 you show up in this work. And what I was going to say earlier, and it has happened so many times and you have no idea how frustrated it is, that I'm like, ready to say something and you just, you don't care. You just jump in. And I'm like, all right, that's fine. And you literally say 90% of what I was going to say and you say it better, way better every time. And I'm like, well, shoot, now what am I going to do, right? And so I usually just, I don't know how many times have I said, yeah, what she said. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. What she said, it's good. It's good. We move on. So anyway, thanks for your service to our kids, to the district. I guess I won't have you as a mentor, but I'll keep you as a friend.
But Ailey, you say that too. You're very humble. You're like, you just said it. You said it better than me. You're very humble too.
We have a lot of smart people on this board. All right, your turn.
Now I'm wondering why everybody's set up for breakfast because usually I'm the lamplighter or whatever that place is.
The Limelight.
The Limelight.
They, Limelight also has a great breakfast on the weekends, Julia. Just, you know.
Yeah, I wouldn't know about that, but I do know about your Long Island iced teas. Oh.
I, I do like myself a Long Island iced tea. I'm not going to lie.
That was like the first drink. I was like, you gotta be kidding.
When you only drink one drink, you gotta go big or go home.
So she said.
She's not a rosé type of a person.
Anyway, so everybody's been talking about your ethics. So I just thought I'd mention that you tolerate stealing. And this may come as a surprise to everybody else, but for some reason, over the last four years, I keep getting, sitting next to Ailey and she comes in with all this stuff and like by the time we're done, I've like packed away her pins, her knelt pads. She's like, what happened to my stuff?
My copies of reports.
So I appreciate your tolerance and like my spreading out and.
But the great thing is you always have what I need then.
I do indeed. Yeah, if you need a piece of paper or some document, I got it for sure. So I also am just going to note that, you know, as a one-termer, when I, in 2005, when I said my comments that I was so glad I'd left and, you know, my kids were on their way, 10 years later, so you don't necessarily get to leave just after one term. But I know you'll contribute in some other way. And the one thing I'd just like to spotlight about your service, which I loved, is going to be kind of odd because I had, you and I are like completely different in this space because like, I'm a big sports person. So anytime there was like athletics or PE, I'm like, yeah, we got to do that. And like, who didn't like PE when they were in school? And then, you know, but I of course like was horrible at music and arts or anything related to that. And you were always the champion. And what I loved about it is you were the champion, I think, because you love arts and music and everything else. But you really did it from the sense of wanting kids to be able to pursue their passion. And every, and what I loved about it is I felt like you were okay with me being like the champion for PE and sports because like that was my thing and all the other things that kids have that they're passionate about. But that you recognize that in students, that that's super important. So you were always a great advocate for the arts and music. But I also think you were a great advocate for every kid finds their own passion and they need to have adults in the system and board members support them. And you did that and you did it because you knew how important it was for people. So thanks for elevating that.
I definitely.
You've got half an hour.
I got plenty of time. I have plenty of time. I'm only going to use three of my five closes. Watch out, watch out. So the, when I first got on, we were still having, we were still having, some of our meetings were online. And I would get on and I'd be sitting there hungry and, because I'm sitting downstairs. And then I get a text message one night and it's, it's Ailey saying, this is why I always have snacks. I said, we can have snacks at the thing? And she was, every time we were online, she was like, yes, of course you can have your snacks. Just look away for, she would send me these messages and coach me along the way. And I'm just like, thank you so much. Snacks were, snacks were huge just getting started. I'm trying, presence is everything. And then she's like sitting there and she's just happy eating her little stuff. We in the middle of the thing and she's just eating the thing, then all of a sudden a cat pop by. And I'm thinking in my mind, you got to kick the cat away. Nope, not Ailey. Ailey grabs the cat, brings it right on, starts stroking the cat right there, talking about this is the cat's space. And so, you know, y'all are in it, welcome to it. And it was just this sense of like, I'm, I am here to do my job and I can do all these, these other pieces, you know, to, to a certain degree. So I was like, well, how do you do the preaching thing? Because this takes up so much time. And she helped with that. All the questions that, you know, you have these random questions, they're all not all about board stuff. It's about, you know, how are we going to do the rest of our lives and how are we doing these other things while at the same time making sure we give this the, the level of attention that it needs? And she was able to coach me on how to do that respectively, but make sure that you have boundaries. It was at that point that I realized that I could carve out a day and say, don't call me. I'm not going to answer because this is my planning day. This is my prep day where I have to get ready. I learned that because Ailey coached me on that, to tell me that you can set aside time to say, unless the building is burning down, then there's no need to call me. And if the building is burning down, call the fire department because there's nothing that I can do about it anyway. So essentially, don't call me. Like, wow, mind blown. So I appreciate you for always willing to be more than, than just a board member, always willing to be more than just someone that we sit beside, but willing to be concerned about how we do the rest of our lives, how we continue our day-to-day. Everybody has talked about integrity, but you do that with everything. It's like be mindful of all of it. Your family is important. So don't sacrifice family for this stuff because at the end of the day, you got a family that's waiting for you. Never forget that. Just having those types of things where you got somebody else coaching you on where it's like, okay, thank you, thank you. And you never know where the amazing information is going to come from. And we didn't know each other at first, but yet she, she worked with me and supported me as if we had been friends for years. You wouldn't have been able to tell that we just met because the way that she embraced and the way that she connected was like, we're here, we're doing this and we've known each other forever. And then, you know, we were both clergy. I just don't cuss as much, clearly. Clearly I don't cuss as much as Ailey. And I, I don't know, I don't know if we're ever going to meet there, but, you know, it is what it is. And I love you anyway.
I, I packed snacks for today, but I can't find them. No, I, I packed.
They're in Julia's backpack.
I packed that butter tin of truffles that I bring sometimes to board meetings. I thought I had my butter truffles. Yeah, like they're probably on my desk at home. So I have to say, like, this has been the hardest thing I've done is to be on the board for the last four years. I think being chair during the pandemic was insane. And I definitely wore a path in the sidewalk around the block where I live because I did a lot of talking on the phone and walking, a lot of late nights with Superintendent Guerrero, like walking the streets of Selwood while he's on the phone, trying to figure out and, and dealing with the new information. One of the things I'm really honored with is that when we moved from the two-week shutdown to the longer term, which we all knew was coming, I had a couple of senior staff call me just to grieve together and just to grieve what we had hoped for PPS before the pandemic and, and to realize things were different. And I just want to say those relationships and like grieving together and being able to then set that aside and move forward, I was so impressed by the staff here and their ability to do that, to name those feelings and to honor it and then to say, okay, I'm really sad, I'm kind of scared, now let's focus on our kids. And the turnaround there was incredible. And I'm, I will always be grateful that I was part of the amazing work PPS did during the pandemic. And the fact that like our learning loss has been less than other places, I think speaks to the incredible leadership of Superintendent Guerrero, but also all of our staff that really dug in, our teachers, you know, everybody who made that work. And I will always be proud to have my name associated with that. It has been hard. And I was saying about, Amy, you said you love us all. And I remember one of my first board meetings, we were at, maybe we were at Franklin or Grant, it was in Grant. And we stood up at the end and I just felt like, oh, I love these people. Like, I love that I get to do this. I love that I get to be with these people. Now, there were days when I was like, I hate all y'all and y'all, all y'all are dumb and all y'all are wrong. So I wasn't as gracious as Amy and love you all the time, but I think, all the time. I, I know that I am a better person for having served with each of you. And I feel like I have grown and learned and that, that has been such an incredible gift to have gotten to walk alongside you and to do this incredible work of caring for the students of this district. I am, I feel like I've gotten to sit at the feet of such incredibly high-capacity leaders like Superintendent Guerrero, like Dr. Proctor, like Dr. Adams, like Dr. Brown, like Sean Bird, like Nolberto, there's Jonathan, there's so many people just from their leadership styles and their way of showing up in the work. Liz, I feel like I want to be you when I grow up because you are so smart and you are so student-centered and you just care so much. My, I think we have everything we need to be an exceptional world-class district. My fear for us is that our fear will get in the way. And we get so much thrown at us, like just even today with people yelling and the carrying on, there, there is so much negativity towards PPS and there is so much anger. And, and it, it is normal to feel reflexive towards that and feel defensive. And I think sometimes I know that my defensiveness has gotten in the way of really good work. And I just hope the rest of y'all can be better than me and let go of that, both with the public and the media and with each other. And find ways to really be soft and grace-filled with one another while holding on to that core of integrity. Because that, what AJ says, you know, it's when adult behaviorists change is when outcomes for kids change. And if you as a board are going to be serious going forward about doing this work, I hope that you all take some time as the new board members come on to reflect how you might show up in this work differently to get some of those different outcomes. Because we all, we say we're a learning institution, we all can continue to learn and grow. And I know that as I step away from the board, I'm going to continue to learn and grow and, and maybe in 10 years I'll be back.
Sped it the second and third time around.
I think next we may, Roseanne, have something to present?
Present?
Or superintendent, or I don't know where to look. I feel like this is a moment I should say, in my script it says, next we give gifts. So.
We have a few tokens of appreciation that we hope remind our, our two leaders of their time here at PPS. Of course, it features student art. The first one reads, and there was a lot of debate about which illustration or which piece of artwork might, might capture you. In recognition and appreciation of Ailey Lowry for her extraordinary service on behalf of all Portland Public Schools students. And the next one, in recognition and appreciation of Amy Konstam for her extraordinary service on behalf of Portland Public School students. You'll recall it was our state-of-the-art, winning artwork from students. Thank you both. We hope you will hang it up and think of us on Tuesday nights.
Yes. Thank you both for your service. Thank you for your service. Thank you for, this is the last board meeting of the school year and so we are adjourned and we'll see y'all in July.